Next up is 9:30 and it's a legislative update from Pots and Associates. Mr. Zach Kennedy, I don't know if he's online yet, but we'll be expecting him around 9:30.
Should we just turn the recording off until he comes online so we're not running no empty space?
We can. Do we want to turn the recording off for five minutes until he gets on so we're not recording nothing?
Are either of you going to, there's the walkabout today and then a meeting tonight? We got emails about for Goldendale.
I would have liked to, but we obviously have this until late. And then I have the SEEK meeting tonight. Monthly meeting, so.
SEEK is now in the evenings? Seek used to be.
Goldendale.
Oh.
A nonprofit out here that's trying to get the community cleanup thing going.
And you're underneath the other Seek, right? Okay.
So. Yeah, bad day of the week for me. I did reach out to him and say, let me know what you come up with and if you need any help. Yeah, with this full day and then that meeting tonight and then driving to Olympia tomorrow for bike steering, I will be at the Dispatch BBQ tomorrow night either, so. Cause I'll be in Olympia.
Got it. Are you planning on doing the barbecue tomorrow night?
I had not thought about it. I need to look. There's so many things. See what I can rearrange depending on what you guys want to share or who needs to cover what. I can look at what I could switch up.
It wasn't last year, it's very informal. You know, get a tour if you need one. I didn't need one. Have the little barbecue downstairs.
And it's at their center out there? Okay. Are you going Jake?
I'm still waiting to find out a couple of things.
Okay.
It's in my calendar, but.
Let me know. I, I do, Wednesday is a problem for me. I do have one I can't get out of. Tonight's better, but Wednesday's.
Did you want to do that one tonight with the walkabout?
I could if you count.
What time is that?
Goldendale Grange, I think it's, I want to say five o'clock.
Oh, it's not on my calendar.
Is it the Grange?
The walkabout, or the walkabout here starts here to downstairs at two o'clock.
Okay. And then dinner at the Grange at five?
And then I believe it, yeah, and I think you kind of have to RSVP, so. I would. I would reach out. Five to seven thirty happy hour. Registration required. Or just email me if you can attend. Surprised you weren't included in that, but.
Yeah, I think it's from Nicole. Yeah.
Yeah, you're on it.
I can say yes if you guys can't do it.
Yeah, good news, good note, legislature is almost done.
Still not there.
I don't see them.
I did communicate with him and this will probably be your last update.
I don't find that time Dan for.
You know what?
The afternoon, evening, five to seven thirty.
Where's that?
I have an invitation for the two to three.
It should be on the start of that email.
Okay. It just gives me the yes button.
Wasn't it?
Yeah. I can just email Nicole back and let her know I can only come for the evening maybe?
Yeah, the original one was sent Friday, March 10th to 2:11.
Yep.
Actually, no, that was my bad. The original one.
That is, yeah, it was March 10th as well. Happy hour, five to seven thirty. Civic brand.
Yeah, mine doesn't have that happy hour invitation.
It's in the other email, the first one.
Okay.
The, the calendar invite for the two thirty one, right below that.
One of them. Love that one.
See, I don't have that one, I just have that one from her.
Take Nicole in there and it'll.
See if she comes out.
Yeah, see if it, you may have moved it or something. There you go.
Okay, here it is. The, the first one. Let me try that one. Ah. So I did that one, the invitation. Yeah, right, okay. I'll just reply to that. Thank you.
I was kind of thinking to jump on the walkabout, but we have a long day and there's things that need to be discussed in the afternoon, so. Still waiting on Mr. Zach Kennedy to come on to Zoom for our legislative update. I was just letting everybody listening know.
While he's waiting, is there anything you'd like to discuss about the hot list since you're going up this week?
Not me.
I don't have anything.
One thing that I don't think it's on the hot sheet, but that was of a concern was the white salmon assisted living where we didn't get. In the, they have an amount of money they need to preserve, so they need to get something in, help preserve that money. They're, they're gonna lose. Lost their three million request, they have 3.2 saved aside and it would go way up if they get nothing. So contact with Chris Corey and Curtis King.
Yeah, but that was legislative appropriation and they already released the budget, they'd had to put that into budget.
They seem to think there's a way that they could still get something in there. And they reached out saying, can you talk to Curtis King and Chris Corey? Just if there's.
Joel reached out to you asking that?
Yeah. And I don't know if that's possible.
So I know he reached out back before the Senate approved their budget and they were hoping to get it in the House budget still. So that way there would be compromise.
This was just the last.
And sent letters to everybody and I sent letters to everybody, but then when the House released their budget, it's in neither one of them. I guess technically there's going to be some debate, but I don't know that there's still. Yeah. I'll lay it in the game to insert something like that, what's your opinion?
I don't know how, it can still get inserted. I mean, what I'm seeing, the big one that we've, we've been tracking is, is the, the House and the finance transportation package for the Hood River Bridge and OFM came out with a letter yesterday saying both the House and the Senate transportation package funding is not rational, logical, or, and can't be moved forward in its current form. It was a really strongly worded letter that saying they don't know what they're doing and that they're trying to push all this money out and the Department of Transportation can't push that kind of money out. They can only do about $3 billion a year and they're, they're expecting $7 billion a year. The only good part of that is, is that we can point out and say, well, any money that goes towards us doesn't have to go through state DOT. So we can actually get the money on the ground, but it's still not a pretty picture when it comes to it.
Not a good year.
Well, there's, just like, you know, there's a lot of asks out there and even after good revenue years, there's still a lot of asks.
Well, I don't know that it's, I mean, it was a good revenue year, but I think their budget proposal is up 18% from last year.
Yeah.
So, you know, they're not living within their means by any means.
But here we are asking for millions and millions of dollars.
If you don't ask, somebody else will get it. They're giving it away, so.
What we're asking for is pretty crucial.
That's how I worded it in my letters too.
Yeah, we've got the, you know, the exact same issue with the airport, you know, and that project down there, phase two, you know, Richard's put, you know, significant portion of his time into getting this federal grant loan packages and the county stepped up to the plate. And it's just, things are costing so much to build, but it's.
Yeah, I'll be curious when it's all said and done to look at the list of appropriations into the county to see what, what the county, not, what entities in the county got appropriations. Because it's like what Dell was saying, he heard on the radio, $7.2 million brought back for the county. I'd be curious where that is. If that was accurate.
Still not, did we send him a message?
We did. There he is.
Mr. Zach, are you there? Are you ready to roll?
I am finally here, sorry about that.
Not a problem, sir.
I got cornered and could not get away, so sorry. I saw Lee's email like, oh, good, let me out. So sorry about that. I'll, I'll get right into it for you guys. It's super short today. We're coming up on cutoff tomorrow. There's a lot of people that are, are scurrying around trying to do a lot of stuff, but, you know, whether it be budgets or bills or this or that, whatever it may be, a lot of this stuff is already cooked. Deals have been broken, deals have been made. But basic, what I would tell you is anything that looks like a good tax. And by that, I mean, anything that looks like it could be a tax or a way to raise money, they're probably going to do it. They're super short on the budget, like ridiculously short on the budget. Especially over the two-year biennium here and right now they're not willing to cut anything on affordable housing. You know, the conversations have come up, I don't know if you were, gosh, was it, one of the things that they're looking at, and I'm sure you've seen it at the pumps, is the carbon credit stuff and their carbon offsets, they're so proud of themselves for raising a couple billion dollars on carbon and now price of gas is over four bucks again. And Hillary Franz, when she was confronted with that, you know, and I think it was Art Swanick, oh yeah, it sure looks like this is just a tax on rural areas, you know, and people who drive a lot. And Hillary couldn't wait to get off the phone. In fact, she skipped the second half of their presentation because she had to go to a meeting, so. A lot of this stuff is coming down. There's a huge push to get as much through as they possibly can this year because I can tell you right now, there is absolutely zero political will to get anything done next year. And the, this is not a partisan statement by any, by any means, I will preface it with that. The Democrats are extremely concerned, specifically because they're in the majority. Their opponents are already out there campaigning against them for the 2024 election year. And they have a lot more to lose because they have more members up for election in both houses than the Republicans do. And it doesn't take a lot of seats for them to lose their majority or certainly, you know, lose the power that they have. Still not, it's still completely up in the air with the governor's race as well. So those conversations are starting to happen now and good or bad, the Republicans are basically foaming at the mouth because they're getting railroaded right now by the Ds. Everything from firearms legislation to taxes to affordable housing to the carbon stuff, I mean, the environmental policies, all of it. They have realized, this is kind of the conversation behind the scenes, they have realized that they cannot stop what is coming. And the majority party has enough votes that they're going to do what they want to do. And you can't get out in front of it, so they're already starting to plan for the elections. All this stuff will start coming out. Here is the year goes on and they're going to be pointing a lot of fingers, see, we told you. And that's only going to get worse into next year and I think the majority party knows that. And so they're trying to get as much done as they possibly can. None of it is exceptionally good for the rural areas. You know, there, there's not, obviously the majority of the representatives are from the west side of the state and from the inner city space. So especially since they're new, like 50% of them are, have never been in person kind of thing. And they're trying to figure out what to do and they can only see their own little microcosm there. And so this is kind of a dismal outlook for us at the moment. You know, and even inside the Republican Party, for example, on the accessory dwelling units, those ADU bills. There's kind of a fight going on between, hey, we stand for personal property rights and, oh, we stand for the cities and counties. Those ADU bills have really split the Republican Party here. You know, on those, that issue, that, that standpoint, you know, do we stand for private property rights or do we stand for, you know, local control of the counties, the cities doing that? I don't know how that one's going to shake out, but to be honest with you, again, it really doesn't matter because the majority party has enough of a vote, they're going to do what they want to do. And I don't think on many bills, we're, we're seeing a lot of party line votes and we're not seeing a lot of Republican amendments hung on things. I don't know if that's by design or if they've just kind of said, well, we're not going to get it anyway, or we'll try, slow the process down. This thing's going to get kind of ugly as we get down to the end. 1670 is still in play, that's the going to 3% on your local option instead of 1%. Anything they can do, they've realized, the budget writers, you know, there's only a few of them, realize that they don't have the dollars. And everything they're doing, we use the term kick the can down the road pretty frequently. That's what they're doing pretty much everywhere they possibly can. They're even pushing some stuff through that they kind of know is going to go to court and get challenged. But it still buys them another year while it's in court to figure out where to get the money. They're literally going that far with the budgets to try and figure out what to do. Because they're unwilling to cut programs, they're kind of taxed to the max. You know, that's why we're seeing things with capital gains and, and other things that they're trying to raise revenue. So, and they're also seeing a significant drop in fuel revenue, you know, for the transportation budget. Kind of one of those things where I think we're back to, we were number four, I think we're back to number one or two in the country of the highest gas tax. You know, and we're, we're still pushing more towards electrification and all that. I don't know about you guys, but I'm not entirely sure you'd be able to make it to Seattle with an electric car and one charge. So that's kind of what we're looking at right now. I don't want to say the doors are locked, but we literally find out what's really happening when they pass it on the floor. And, you know, there's lots of speculation and all this is happening and this is happening. We hear more about fights than we do about what, what is actually going on. So they did pass the firearms bills, specifically 1240. That's the really kind of, I'll call it strange one, where they identified hyper masculinity specifically in the bill. This, the House, when they passed it, actually kind of rolled out the timeline a little bit. Gave a little bit of time for the, the gun shops to sell off their inventory, but only to people outside of Washington. It's in concurrence right now, that one is going straight to the courts. We'll never see it implemented in the form that it is. I don't know what it's going to look like when it comes out of the courts, we will have to kind of have a look at that. It could be that that was the plan all along, but long story short, I mean, if you go back and watch a Florida base, hey, guys, this is unconstitutional from the start, you can't say some of these things. So I don't know if they got the bill or if they throw it out and say try again, but we'll see what happens with that one. That's, that's a big one that a lot of people in the rural areas have been watching. Any questions on anything from you guys? I don't have a lot of super outstanding things to share.
Zach, I got one, this is Commissioner Christopher. Do you have any idea on their budget on how much of it is actually programs and what percentage of it is appropriations? Back to their communities?
Oh boy. I don't know those exact numbers. I didn't find out though.
I don't, I don't want to make you have too much work, I'm just thinking, you know, if you got a budget that's overly bloated and you don't have enough revenues, you know, slowing down some appropriations might help, but then it's hard to get reelected, so.
Well, you know, the problem is, I mean, and I hate to say it, but a lot of the budget, gosh, it's, we only have, and I don't know the numbers this year, but traditionally it's somewhere between 25 and like 37% discretionary fundings. So that would be your appropriation side. All the rest is committed to social programs of one type or another. And it's kind of been that way pretty consistently for the last, well, however long. And so when you're looking at a, you know, a huge budget and you've only got to say a maximum 35% for discretionary funding, you know, while you, you might have a hundred billion dollar budget, it still only leaves 35 billion for everything from transportation to all the, the things that need to get fixed, the infrastructure stuff, near South Freeway in Spokane, for example. You know, I-5 corridor stuff and, and you can suck down some billions of dollars and just things like that real quick.
Right, so you're not seeing a, a big increase this year in discretionary spending? It's more programs going on.
Yeah, it's the programs that they have running that they've already committed, you know, they committed last year, ten years ago or whatever. And that, that really is a huge constraint on the budget, year in and year out. So, and, and what they're showing is either an unwillingness or they are unable to shrink those programs or cut those programs.
Okay, thanks, sir.
So that's, that's what I've got for you at the moment and, you know, we'll know, this is, this is a slugfest at the end and there's going to be some hurt feelings and all that good stuff, you know? Typical third grade politics.
This is Commissioner Zoller and I do have one question, I suppose it's fruitless to ask, but I'm going to do it. We had a line item for assisted living in White Salmon that they worked very, very hard on. This was a crucial funding from the budget for three million ask. It didn't even make the books and so they called again and said, is there any way we can get anything back in there for a little bit of a portion of something? They have another 3.2 million at risk if we don't get something in. Is there any discussion at all that could put that in there somewhere or is it fruitless at this point?
I mean, it's, it's never a lost cause until that gavel drops on Sunday night, last day. You know, and, and being the fact that it is a healthcare system, I, I think that there is a chance. And, you know, they don't, they don't tell us whether it was overlooked or they just thought it wasn't that important or, you know, from year to year, how they prioritize these projects is so hard to tell. You know, and, and it almost seems arbitrary, but what they do is they go through and they have staff members take these certain projects and look at them, evaluate them and then kind of give a recommendation which one's the most important. And if there's not a pet projects, you know, that the chair or somebody on the committee says, I, I have to have this. You know, it's kind of a crap shoot, 50/50, is it going to, going to get it or not, you know?
Okay, thank you.
So, yeah, of course. And I'll, I'll ask around a little bit again, you know, I mean, I've never got a real firm answer one way or the other on anything when we were talking about that.
Okay.
So.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Absolutely. Well, that's what I have for. Apologize for, for the late join and let me know if there's any questions, I'll be available, call, email, text anytime.
Alrighty, thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, so with that, I would say, you know, maybe draft up a letter and send it out to the three of them. I will see, I don't know what's on Wosack's plate up there. Being in the minority, I think it's.
If I ask.
You, you don't get as much discretionary as somebody else does. Where you have to pick and choose your discretionary. Anybody else have anything for, to go to the order while we wait? Yeah, 1240 is interesting, I don't know how they even thought part of the wordage they had in there was acceptable, but doesn't surprise me. And I think he's right from what I'm getting is the same way, it's not that the Republicans have given up. They just get tired of banging their head against the wall. Because they used to be able to put amendment on or something and lock it up and slow it down and negotiate and horse trade. And then last year they did a bunch of horse trading. And said, okay, we'll sign on to these bills with this horse trade and then the governor line item vetoed everything that was horse traded, so they have zero faith moving forward to even negotiate. So we are where we are. We have five minutes, we can talk court contracts. I think there's a question on, do we want to put court contracts and probation into one contract? Or do we want it as two, or do we want it as one and for probation to have their own contract for a second one? Either way, we need to figure out where we're going.
So the cities of Benjen and White Salmon wrote up some MOUs. And forward those to us, the PA now has access to that and is. And forward those to us. Um, the PA now has access to that and is reviewing that. And it's going to make some recommendations on it. So we're still moving forward. Probation is not included in that contract currently. Um, there is language in there stating that the sheriff's agreement for jail services is separate and, but it still shouldn't, I don't think be an MOU. If it's just court cost, it's court cost. So that's an elected official. We haven't, um, had the discussions on. With Goldendale about, um, probation side. So we're going to have to have those discussions. Um, I don't, I think it would slow us down if we, we were to try to start into that. I know it's not budgeted on their budget. There's some discussion on, um, whether or not we should use the cost or the net approach. Um, because the cities are getting their revenue pulled out and getting already reimbursed. So we've already pulled that revenue out, so. Doing it on a net is kind of unfair. From the discussion with the PA.
So we're still waiting, is what we're saying.
Yeah, and it's going to take a while because he's got a lot of different, we've asked him a lot of questions. There's different contracts to look over. Settlement negotiations, a bunch of other stuff.
Yep. Okay, um. Any other? Information to kill four minutes or eight starting too early in case somebody tuned in for Jeff's riveting update. Oh, well, let's start early. We'll run out.
Okay, we have a few things to discuss, so maybe. Use all the time. Okay, we have a few things on your consent agenda today. The first, first one is the contract for a liquid asphalt purchase, um, agreement. That does not have a total on it because it's based on what we buy. We just lock in a price at today and it was a good price, so. One thing that went down, which is not a lot. A local agency supplement agreement for the curb warning signs and Seth will give more of an update in his update here in a few minutes. And then number nine, we talked about this last week. Um, I was, uh, not quite correct because, uh. After talking with you, we still have to, we have to, um, accept or show the expenditure of that grant somewhere. The dollars. We're not asking for any more money. What I told you is what we're going to do with the non-capitalist. We moved a project. But you're going to see an increase in the non-capitalist. And then the expenditures to cover for that grant, the grant money that Heather had got. So the, the actual capital, non-capitalist will go up by an additional sixty-five thousand dollars. Which is the grant, which is the grant, which is a portion of the grant, which Heather's going to cover under her budget. Now we'll just transfer it out. And, uh, that covers, there's no payments and I'll turn it over.
On the construction end of things, Courtney Road, they finished the slough slope repair last week. And they're now working on a few soft spots that showed up on the lower end of the project, not the reconstruction portion, but the overlay project. And the bad portion of asphalt installed last year is going to be ground up and removed starting tomorrow. Uh, fairgrounds.
Do we remove that and do we reuse that?
They're going to remove it, maybe incorporate it back in the mix. I don't know.
Becomes the, becomes the contractor gets it.
Yeah, it's just too far gone to try to do anything with it and try to match in, so they.
Chew it up into gravel and put it on a road, is what you're saying.
Normally we would do, a lot of times that happens, but in this instance, no. This was from last year when they paved. They did a crappy job, so it would change the whole grade. They're just going to grind it up and remove it.
Are you going to cover the fairgrounds, waterline?
Yeah, I'll discuss.
Okay. And then the annual striping project's getting ready to start up. We already got some delivery of paint and beads. And pre-construction meeting is scheduled for the twenty-fourth of this month and they're going to start striping as weather allows. On design, so Wash Dot, I did hear something back from Wash Dot this week. And it was only from local programs. We haven't got any approvals yet to go to add. Sounds like what had happened is it just trickled back down to local programs and there's nothing that they can do because the approval is still waiting up at headquarters. So I haven't heard anything more other than that. Just local programs gave me a call yesterday and said, hey, they heard that there was some concerns of how long things are taking. And they assured they're doing everything they can, but the bottleneck is still at headquarters.
No, it's a he said, she said.
Yes, two different departments. Headquarters has, uh, has, controls everything, basically.
Was there a change in staffing? Why this new going out to add has to go through headquarters? Because it used to always go through local, right?
Right. So FHWA made a new requirement at the end of last year that. Everything had to go to headquarters for approval and they weren't staffed up in order to make this change at headquarters. So, yeah, they've got one person up there that everything has to go through.
So it was a he said, she said, but it was because of the feds.
Well, yeah, that get back to the he said, she's, that's what we're hearing from the state. But we don't know that because that's, we don't get the other side. We don't get the fed side. It's possible that the feds come into that, but the state likes to use the feds as a scapegoat and put in a lot of their own regulations.
So do we want to give them more time? Do we want to not make this call again and be like, we just added another seventy days to our ninety-five days?
I say we wait another, let's see what happens this week. I know that local programs is pushing. They should have been pushing all along, but they're pushing even harder now. So let's see what happens this week and we'll give you an update next Tuesday. See if there's something more we can do. And I'll be sending them a new project in this list. We've got, um. While the curve warning signs and guidepost, you guys are signing the LA agreement, so that's going to start that process all over. We'll see if that moves any quicker than these other ones did. And let's see, what else do we have? The safety data collection project, which is going to be done by a consultant, is going to gather curve. Information throughout the county. We sent the scope of work and the advertisement to Wash Dot for review. So they can consider whether we need to assign a disadvantaged business enterprise goal to that project or not. And design work continues on Sunday, Illinois eight. Uh, right away needs are being evaluated and calculated. The final archaeological report has been received and we'll be submitting that to, uh, DAP for approval.
And that's about, yeah, half for updates, Jeff.
Okay, okay. Uh, maintenance, maintenance stuff, uh, east end is grading, crack sealing and brooming sand. West end is, is brooming grading where, when it starts drying out. Uh, also when it dries out a little bit more, we have scheduled placing gravel on High Prairie and Hartland roads. And, uh, they're removing trees from Trout Lake Park, which is an annual thing. It's. Uh, just, we've planted more trees back there, but we had another nine to remove this year that have died. Or in the process of dying. No, these are big old trees, uh, pine trees and fir trees. We actually, our crews remove them.
Okay.
Uh, there's one we will hire because it's close to the property line and it's hanging over somebody's and I just, we don't want that liability. So we bring a contractor in for that, but other than that, and they just take the tree down, our crew still take care of getting rid of the slash and everything.
Are they chucking it as it comes down?
Yeah, we have a, we have a chipper and they chip all the limbs and everything and then the chunks, they. I don't know if they're hauling them off or they're leaving them there this year. It varies. Sometimes they leave them there, but. You know, we don't really encourage too many fires there just because, uh, we have them, you know? But if we get into, where we get into, where we end up with shutdown due to fire danger, then, you know, we turn the burning off there. So I'm not sure what we're doing with the chunks. Sometimes we just take them out to a quarry and then they get disposed of out there. But I, I don't know, I can check and see what we did with them this year. Um, is, we're still putting together the estimates for the HVAC on this building. Um, courthouse HVAC is scheduled for, last year's project is scheduled for May installation. Pioneer Center and the courthouse, this year's projects, we're hoping for a fall installation. But probably planning for next year's installation because the, getting the units has not improved. Um, Superior Court's the same thing. Waterline, um, hydro testing is complete. All the line is in, everything's been tested. All we have is the purity testing, which will be done to, this should be done right as we're speaking. It's getting done. And then we'll be ready, once we get the results back from the health department, we'll be ready to turn the water line back on. And that project will be complete. Uh, four H events, we have a four H horse event this weekend and an archery event next weekend at the fairgrounds. And then home and garden, May fifth and sixth. So, you know, finally the, the, we're starting to pick up events up there again. Um, juvenile, we're still working on courthouse break room is complete. So if you'd like a tour, feel free to go down and look at it. If not, we can take you through it. I think everybody, everybody's happy with it. Um, I think the last thing is, uh, for IT or TS to put on the scheduler. But everything else is done for that, for that room. Yes. Break room and the conference rooms, a conference room. Okay, uh, Fuel Islands, we're working, we'll have a design agreement next week to the board. For the preliminary design for the Fuel Island out, out at, out by the fairgrounds. Um, radio tower site, it's still the same place. Follow-up issues. Okay, Oak Ridge, I'll, I see we got a, a email from. Pauline, I believe, isn't it? Yes. Um, I've actually answered her twice. I'll answer, it's my fault. I forgot to answer the third time. It's just the same questions written in different ways.
It looked very detailed, like it, it time consuming to answer to it, yeah.
Yeah, and they're just written, they're just, it's written in circles and then we'll come back. It's the same thing until something goes through. So I'll answer, I, I apologize for missing it. Paper shredding, we wanted to bring this to you. Uh, because when this first started, we did it as part of this building project because people had to move over. We were paying it under this. Then we transferred it out of that account because it really isn't a capital investment. Just, just went moving. And then when people got here, we put it in, um, buildings and facilities budget. Well, now we've had extra people ask us if they could get a, a shredding bin. Problem is, is we don't, Pam tells, we don't have the money in our budget and facilities to cover these extra. And they're not saying they want us to cover it. They're saying, you know, we'll cover it. We just, you know, we just want a, a bin. I know the treasurer's asked for one. Uh, building and planning want to keep theirs. It's just come the time we just don't have the budget. So there's a couple of options. One, the other departments pay. We would keep the contract and then we would just build them. That would be the cleanest because if each department has a contract with the shredding. Then we pay administration for all the contracts. We either do it that way or, I mean. The board chooses, we could do an, uh, amendment and then you change money around and all this other stuff. But it sounds like the departments have the money in their budgets. They're not asking us to pay for it. They're just saying we would like to get these.
What is the cost?
Fifty dollars a bin. So, and you don't pay for the rental of the bins. So when you want them emptied, you know, public works sched. Today what happens is public work schedules them. They come, they get the, you know, they get the bins and then, then we pay fifty dollars per bin.
Um, is there any downside to just having public works build the departments out for their? I, I could go for that.
Okay. We'll continue that process and just build the other departments that want to do it. And it helps people keeping things clean, so. I think we're on a good momentum, so we want to kind of keep that. Okay, uh, Dallas Port tour is scheduled for the twenty-sixth, um, at ten thirty. Um, artwork.
You said the last Dallas Port.
Well, I'm hoping the last one. I think the board was fa- fairly clear, but, uh. We'll see how the other group responds. Artwork, I kind of have forgot to remind, I, I need to know what you're looking at, so, uh. Because she's, uh, getting ready, she's putting it all on canvas and stuff. We made the first payment to her. We're getting ready to make the second because it won't be long. We'll be getting this stuff. So I need to know, I think you had suggested, Commissioner Christopher, you wanted like three more paintings or something, three more pictures.
Potentially, yeah.
Yeah, if we could get those, then we could move forward.
Um. Well, I'm sure she already has those. I would just have to tell her which ones.
Yes, exactly. We just need to know which ones.
Um, okay, she doesn't have the store open anymore. She's working out of her house, right?
I think, yes. Tracy, um, I can, I'll, we'll figure out something to get it to you or. So we could, you could identify which ones you're thinking.
Um.
Unless you have a copy of it.
I'll just reach out to her and.
Okay.
About that.
Okay, that sounds.
Back in my court. Got it.
Okay.
I'll forget it off my list, too.
Makes it easier for me, though. Okay, Title XII standards hearings. Um, so we've met with the board or met the last time, last week. With the committee. Committee's happy with where everything's at. We're making our final tweaks and we're sending it to the public. What our thought was is we'll put an ad in the paper, we'll put an ad out on, um. On the internet, on the website. Uh, we, if you're all right, we'll deliver some hard copies to Lee. So when people come in for, you know, one o'clock, starting next week. We don't, what we don't want is we go through all this, we get ready to have the hearings and somebody goes, the citizens didn't get to plenty of time to review this. So we're giving them four to six weeks, depending on your schedule to set up the hearings. So next week we'll bring forward, um.
Are you going to have a copy or a draft copy of it on your website?
Yes, we'll have it on the website. We're also distributing it to, and actually mail it out to the, um. Community councils. The real estate offices will have it, the engineering offices will have it. We're going to try to get everybody. Because again, we don't want this back push at the end that we didn't, there's been a lot of work and a lot of people's time involved in this. So, um, we want to keep this thing moving forward. So, um, next week we'll bring the, the, uh. The right to add, um, here for the paper ad. Um, to schedule basically here, I mean, we'll tell people that's it and then we need to schedule hearings. Now, we've talked about what to do and, you know, you guys have, the board has to say. What we would recommend is maybe hearings like we do for the sixth year and then see, you know, what kind of input you get. So, but again, that's strictly up to the board. On how you want us to present the hearings. I mean, I thought maybe you have, you know, the one o'clock or the one thirty and then have one in the evening. You could go to White Salmon or you could do it on Zoom too for that. However, however the board wanted to do that. At least we get it out and then, then at that time, the board could make a decision. If they want to do a continuance. And maybe play it by ear. That would be my suggestion instead of scheduling a whole bunch of hearings. I don't know how much, I don't know how much input we'll get.
That makes sense to me. I'm fine with the. Morning or afternoon, evening, one meeting, we'll zoom from here.
Okay, so I don't know what the schedule is. We could get, I get with Lee to schedule a hearing. It probably would be towards the end of May, maybe even the first part of June. Again, depending on how much time the board would like, would like us to give the citizens to review. It's a hundred and eighteen page document, so.
I think your timeframe is about right.
Hundred pages a week.
Okay. So we will, we will make sure that, our goal is to get them out there because we don't want to hear that. Okay, I have one more thing and, uh, received an email from Carriage Group. Carriage Group, of course, is the group that with the solar farm out on, one of the groups that was out at Knight Road. This is not uncommon for the energy companies to do this. They do drilling on private property. They do drilling on private property. Of course, for us, they don't need anything. But they unload their vehicles in the county right away, cause you don't, there's not enough room to unload. You know, off-site. This is not uncommon. They're the only ones that actually ask for a permit, the energy companies. The rest of them don't, the loggers don't, they just take it out there and unload, you know, whatever they need to unload. And so do builders or whoever else. Energy companies don't want to get sideways with the county typically, especially with public works, because we have the ability to shut them down if they do damage to our road. Plus, they don't want to be blamed for that. But my question to, to the board is, that would mean they would get a permit from Public Works to work within the right of way to not, or to unload their vehicle in case they needed to work in the right of way. This is kind of a two-fold thing, because one, they're going to FSAC. But I don't believe FSAC or we would want FSAC to issue permits to the county right of way. Um, I don't know, in the past, the other solar companies have done it, same with the wind companies. It's premature drilling. And we've given them that permit, but we've been very careful not to give them anything else without a road hall in place. But we've allowed them to do that. But again, I'm looking to the board, cause this is unusual, because it's gone to FSAC.
Is, is this just a temporary, I mean, what are they trying to drill? Is there a month limit on it on, you know, we need this for six months or is this?
No, it would be, they come in, they would unload, they would drill, and then they would, they would give us dates. When they're gonna bring their equipment in. And this would be the date they're gonna bring them in, this is the date they're coming out. So it would be one day on both ends. And that's all we would give.
What are they?
Testing or for?
This is for, this is for testing. This is for testing, you know, for their geotech stuff onsite is what it is.
Um, they don't have their, you know, they're in the permit process with FSAC and that may be a while, we don't know.
Right.
Um, but maybe the testing is part of what they need for their application.
Typically, it's what they need, it's the first step they do. They should be, eventually they'll be coming back to us again, that there's why I do, there's one, one other test we allow them to do. They'll, we allow them to do a falling weight deflectometer test on the roads. Um, so then they can, you know, then they can present that stuff for the geotech report to determine what they need to do on, on this part there. We allow that. They have not said that yet, and I don't know what their thoughts are, but we haven't talked to them either. I have not responded to the email or anything. Again, I'm looking for uh, direction from the board.
So they'll actually have a permit to fill out?
Yes, they, they would have a permit that allows them to work within the right of way and simply so they can park. They can take a lane while they unload their drill rigs. And they have two of them is what the email says. And then they'll go offsite somewhere.
Issues?
I think.
I have no issues with it. They've done it out at Lund Hill. They actually asked for it, I'm sure.
Yes.
We could hold the back permit to unload on a county right of way when everybody else does it.
And they're trying to do it the right way.
Yes. Yeah, they could have not came to us. I mean, again, the timber companies don't, but it's kind of a, they've been doing it forever.
Local thing, yeah.
Yes.
That's kind of how I look at it. We do have a moratorium on solar, but we don't have a moratorium on if you can park your road in a county. So, um, as long as it has that limited scope, um, I see no reason why we shouldn't do it.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you for the direction. I think that's all we have on our list.
Thank you for the update and the ask on that. Appreciate that. And thank you both for your hard work. Maybe eventually I will get to stop saying intern acting blah blah. So, okay.
Paperwork aside.
Nothing else for them?
Nope.
Okay. Okay, thank you, thank you.
10:20, it's not 10:30, but are we ready for an HR update or? Come on down.
I think I'm going last, so I can go first if you want. Rob has a previous.
Yep.
Meeting to attend, so he will not be here. Jen has volunteered to go first. I don't really have much, um, other than just progress for the budget book. And we will, see if I can get this loaded up for a screen share. So it's still within um, just proofing, it hasn't been proved, it hasn't been edited, but I am making progress throughout. Things are in conjunction with the criteria for the budget book in accordance to GFOA. Um, I have included new pages, which breaks down personnel budget from operating budget. Um, what our current vacancy rate is in scope of budget. So budgeted personnel wages versus what we actually expended is how I came up with those numbers. Um, mission and vision, um, each one of you had provided me something. And so this, these three statements actually encompassed every, every one of um, your guys' points. About the county, um, our current demographics. About the budget process, um, and the development process, these are all required by um, standard. I kept in the um, problem that Washington County's based with the structural gap and that information, our fund structure. Uh, 2023 budgeted revenues. Historical revenues by base sum. Property tax information, I kept that dollar um, graph that seemed to be really helpful even for prior commissioners. How the landfill has spent. Our expenses, and this is where.
Back one?
Oh, oh, yes, yes, I can. There we go.
Can you a second to digest that? Okay.
I often get questions on how, how much um, we've received from the landfill historically from the beginning of time. I've gotten it more than once and how those are allocated. That's why I keep that chart. Um, the expense, I started to color coordinate with a program area. Um, historically, the county has kept uh, four program areas, which we've treated kind of like strategic planning. Um, so I kept those, and you'll see those colors coordinated all through the entire expense side of, of the book. I have um, started the capital improvement in brief, which is a miniature um, book, similar to the budget book, but only for capital improvement projects. This explains how the process of the capital improvement, basically what Public Works does. Um, and when they engage the pub, the public and what their um, role is. Oh. Getting a little finger hat maneuver, okay. The funding sources for the capital improvement plan, what's restricted, most, the majority is restricted, and then that's identified within there. And then into the general fund expenses. Again, keeping those color coordinated, coordinations throughout. So then that the general, um, general fund is broken out by department and then by program area. And this is the first one, this is where I'm at now, is um, going into the offices and departments. Um, I still actually don't have very many um, directors or elected officials who've given me information. Um, I apologize for putting Billy on the spot, but Billy was the one who was one of the first to get me some information. So this is kind of what it'll look like, again, with the color coordination. Um, Billy's office is, you know, within that general government program area. So that um, color on the, on the side there um, coordinates back to that program area. Um, I was really hoping that the electeds and the directors would give me the information so they can have voice their words and not, you know, leaving it up to me. They know their departments better than I do or offices. So it's hoping that they could, um, you know, give me a little something, but um, if not, I, I have resources I can go to, and so that's just where I'm at. Any questions?
Well, if any directors, I can't deal with electeds, but if any directors are listening, please help Jen. Don't know that that'll do you any good, but.
Well, I appreciate it. Um, yeah, I just wanted their voice to be heard. Um, so. That's all I got.
It looks like a plethora of information.
Yeah.
And I can't wait to dive into it deeper.
Randy?
Don't break my chair or my mic or anything else. You break things, I know.
He's the fixer. You know, I was just about ready to see what support we got from, from, uh, from all of the county and then there you are.
There I am. So you did, and I was very, very pleased at the calmness of the majority of the employees as we transitioned through that. I, I figured it would be a lot more screaming going on and it wasn't, so I was, I was proud of everybody.
And I got a lot of messages of support um, from, from the department heads and elected officials, which I greatly appreciated, um, because it was difficult, to say the least.
Yeah, for those listening that don't know what we're talking about, our firewall crash, so.
Yes.
I'm sure we'll get into it. You'll have, you'll hear more.
Yeah, so uh, my, uh, my report basically is gonna be a, a, a report on lessons learned from last week. Um, I asked Curtis to um, to be on, online with, with us, so if you hear something, that's him chiming in. Okay. Uh, okay, so the first thing I want to say is, is um, lessons learned. The first lesson was that, that um, we really have a really good team here. You know, in a crisis situation, uh, Curtis and, and Jordan both stepped up and, and you know, their, their, their attitude was, let's, let's figure this out, let's get it to work. Um, you know, another thing that we were extremely fortunate to have Jeff Rowe come in in the middle of the night. Um, you know, we're fortunate that he, that he is still, he still just lives a few blocks away and he was willing to come and, and help us out with the situation. So, so I, I want to thank all those people. Um, so now for the problems. The number one biggest problem that, that we saw, we did a, yesterday, we kind of did a little triage with the, with the department and we, we talked about lessons learned. Number one biggest problem was documentation. Or uh, it's, there's, there's no real standard to the document, uh, to, to our documentation. There's no, um, it's not all current. Uh, you know, we've got some information and some information is old, so nothing is real current. Uh, and it's not very well organized. Um, you know, and the thing is, is last year in 2022, we had a 50% turnover in IT. Uh, that, that constitutes two people. Two, you know, in, in a small department, you lose, every person matters. And when you have, when you have that small, small of a department and, and um, you, you either have to have a large department with, with a large knowledge base or a small department with, with good documentation. Our key here is has to be good documentation. We need to ca- honestly, we need to capture information very similar to way the military does, uh, standard operating procedures. Um, I mean, you know, let, let's face it, how can the military hand a multimillion dollar aircraft to say a 22-year-old second lieutenant with, with, uh, with any uh, assurance that they're gonna be able to complete their mission successfully? Training and documentation, that's how they do it. Um, if they don't understand it, then they go, and so ironically, about a month ago, I started, I started standardizing the documentation and I did it first with uh, with, with a procedure on how to write procedures. And, and how to glean the information of what we already have and put it. And then the next thing is going to be a document library. And right now I'm looking at OnBase as, as our document repository. I've already reached out, it was about two, two or three weeks ago, I reached out to our OnBase support, uh, Nardo Scott, and asked her if she could set up a, a structure for us. Um, I, she's working on it right as we speak. And we're, we're starting to get that together, but you know, all of this stuff takes time. You know, a lot of what we have lived on up to this point has been tribal knowledge. You know, well, I know it was that way because it was that way a year ago and, oh yeah, I remember. So-and-so made a change six months ago. You know, we can't, we can't do that, especially with a 50% turnover like we had last year. Okay, uh, I, I just want to put this out there respectfully. Uh, Cisco support was not helpful at all. As a matter of fact, uh, you know, on the phone, Curtis made a trip around the world. As, 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 as time zones, you know, as, as the day shift went through time zones. I think he said he talked to, um, he talked to India, he talked to, I don't know, uh, somewhere over in Europe. He talked to someone in the US, you know, all over the world. Um, it, it, and, and every time he said that uh, he, he got passed off to someone else, they had to reinvent the wheel again. You know, it was a big problem. It couldn't be solved in a 20-minute phone call and Cisco didn't help us. So, and this is kind of out of, out of IT's wheelhouse. Um, but we really don't have a contingency plan um, for how departments continue to do business in, in any kind of emergency type event. Um, there is no, there is no formalized contingency plan. Um, you know. And I think I'll just, because that is out of our wheelhouse, that's, that's a little bu- little above our pay grade, so, so I'm just gonna put it out there. Let's see here. Uh, oh, the other thing is, is information sharing between, between uh, personnel in the IT department is limited. Um, has been limited. I think documentation is going to, um, is gonna clear that up. It's gonna take time, just like, just like training, it's gonna take time. You know, it, that, those aren't things that we can, that we can fix right away. Um, you know, but anytime you have a, something as complex as a network and that information is all in one head, that's, that's not uh, that, that's, that's not a good recipe for uh, business continuity. So, uh, going forward, um, what, what I think we need to do is, is we need to um, we need to be a department of generalists. If IT is gonna stay the way we are right now, we need to be a department of generalist. We need. We need to be the people that our customers, which is, which are the other departments and, and offices, we need to be the people that they call first. But we need support behind us. We need the specialists, you know? We need the network people, we need, and, and it was painful last week that we didn't really know who to call. We were grasping at straws, finding out, you know? Curtis started with the most obvious, which was Cisco, and honestly wasted a lot of time trying to get the information out of them that, that, that we have paid them to provide us, and they didn't do it. So, so we need, we need a list of specialists, whether it's, whether it's a, a network specialist or maybe a Send specialist, or Kianta, or whatever the application is. We, we need to have a list of, of, of phone numbers, email addresses, whatnot to call when the situation gets, gets above us. You know, you go to your, you go to your general practitioner if you have a pain, and if they say, well, looks like you need to go see a cardiologist, well, we need to be able to call the cardiologist. Is, is where we are there. And, and at this point in time, we don't, we don't have that. So in order to do that, we need to develop relationships with vendors that, that have that expertise. You know, we, and, and in order to do that, we need to start out with a well-written contract. And then, I've said it before in this, in this room, you do business with people, you don't do business with companies. I mean, the company is the umbrella, but, but I don't call a company, I call a person, you know? And, and so with that said, once we, once we do identify a vendor, and once we do have a good, solid contract with them, then we need to maintain a good relationship with them. And we need to, we need to, to, you know, not just develop, but maintain that relationship. You know, so. And this is a little bit simpler. And I think, I'm just going to go ahead and throw it out there because it, it came up yesterday, is identify emergency priorities. You know, and this might be a little bit of a, out of our wheelhouse too. But at, for starters, if, if one computer crashes, then one person doesn't work, right? If a network application like Kianta, or, or maybe a Send, or, or, you know, ProVal or something like that, then a department doesn't work. If the network fails, then the county doesn't work, you know? So, so we need to, we need to kind of flesh out some priorities as to how, because, you know, like I said, the, the departments were very patient with us, and they, and they figured out ways to continue to do their work. It's, it's interesting that, that the emergency operations was, was calling the, the Washington State Patrol to get information because they couldn't get, they couldn't access it themselves. So they, they were, they were working on, on alternative methods. But, but as, as we move forward, we just need to get better organized, you know? Like I said, I've started the, I've started the process of documentation, but that's going to be an ongoing process forevermore. We, we've started the RFP process for this very thing. Was, would, you know, to, to get, to get a network redesign. So, so we're already there, and you know, we've already got the, we've already, we've already started that process. It's not completed yet, but we've started it. That's where, that's pretty much, yeah, pretty much what I, what I have. Any questions?
I don't have any questions other than make sure you tell your staff thank you from all of us.
Okay.
For their hard work.
Okay, I will do that.
So as far as HR is concerned, there's just a few updates. Rob wanted me to let you know that he is finalizing the job description for your review for the director of the hopefully new community services department. And he'll get that to you today or tomorrow. And then we're hoping to maybe get that included with the workshop on the 20th for the review and, and approval of the job description along with the org chart and how we want to move forward with, with restructuring that and combining the departments and the other positions. So, so just a heads up on that. Any questions on any of that? No? Another thing too is that the recommendation will be to move forward with the same grade on the job description and not send it to the job classification committee unless you guys want to do that. But as far as the duties are concerned, it is at the top grade. So if it's something that you guys want to review, then it, it would be maybe a, a contract. And so, so that can be discussed maybe during the workshop as well. As far as the grade placement on that, since it is at the top grade within the pay schedule already. Any questions on that? No? Another update on behavioral health. So Erin had got verbal from you guys last week to change one of the contract boxes for the designated crisis responder to a full-time FTE. So that will hopefully be on the agenda for approval on Tuesday with the updated org chart and resolution, moving that one box to a, a full-time FTE. And then I know that there are some other discussions about changing some of the structure, but that will be discussions at a later date to figure out what is going to work best moving forward for that department. And then another reminder, Marty Hudson is retiring as the wage coordinator. His last day will be May 31st. There is going to be a reception for him downstairs in the Mount Adams Room from three to five, and cake will be available, and then they will move to the Legion from five to seven. And so, so just a reminder to keep that on your calendar.
I didn't say is it on our calendar. It was not.
And we'll remind you again at next month's department update.
Somebody just got to get it on my calendar.
And it's a Wednesday, so. One more thing as far as the Washington Cares Trust Act. I have kind of updated you every few months with that regarding the deductions.
The long-term care insurance stuff.
This is, yes, so.
Paid law last year or whatever.
Yes, yep, so they implemented it and then they removed it, and now.
I don't know if you're fully aback.
Yeah, so the Washington Cares Trust Act provides, in 2026, you'll be able to get funds to help pay for long-term care, which is different than disability. And so that has been a confusion.
You won't be able to find a long-term care facility, but.
Yes, it gives you a, a lifetime amount of $36,500, and you can use that for care that you would need, whether it's going to doctor's offices or in-home care, training people to care for you as well. And so that.
Does that cover your own spouse or loved one if they're the ones that are doing the work?
You can get training for them, but I'm not sure they can be paid. I, I don't know the answer to that. I would have to check on that.
I know veteran-wise, they can, they can with veterans, I wasn't sure.
Yes, and veterans can file for an exemption from this because they have that care available. So they have updated it. It was, when they first implemented this, it was for people who lived in the state of Washington and worked in the state of Washington, and you can only get care in the state of Washington, and you could not file for an exemption if you lived outside of the state and, and worked in Washington. But now they have updated that. So Oregon residents would be able to file for an exemption now and not have to get a policy for that. So, so those are going to be available for Oregon residents to, to be exempt from that if they choose to, because you can only get the care in the state of Washington because it's tied within the state program and DSHS and all of that stuff.
When is that payroll deduction starting and what does it look like?
It starts July 1st, and it's 0.58% of the employees' pay. And the employees will see it on their July 10th check. So it will actually affect their pay period from June 16th to the end of the month. I don't think so. They're tying it more now to the state paid leave and, and filing for it, you know? And it is a, it is a lifetime amount. It's not annual. And so they figure that if you had in-home care for 20 hours a week, that that would cover a year's worth of care for that 20 hours a week. So, so if you need in-home care for more than your, or for one year, then it's good, but.
Is there a waiting period, or could somebody technically, is this kind of like social security, where the first people that sign up can work for three more weeks and then they already have a $36,000 bank?
To be able to qualify for it, your birthday has to be before a certain date in 1968, and you have to contribute and work more than 500 hours within the year to be able to qualify for a percentage of that benefit once you retire or need the benefits. And the, and so there are some restrictions, but they have changed it a little bit. But then full benefits, you have to contribute and pay the premium and have 10 years of contributions to be able to qualify for the benefit. So, and those are employee premiums. The county is not required to pay a percentage of that, and so hopefully.
Are we going to send an email out to employees so they know the sticker shock? I mean, it won't be that big of a, but.
Yes.
They're going to see a new FICA.
They are, they're going to wonder what that new deduction is. And employees were notified when it first happened because it was actually deducted from their checks starting January of last year. And so I think as far as the setup is concerned, I think we're okay on the backend part of it. But the state has provided flyers that we can put as inserts with pay stubs, and then emails and notifications that can go out. And I will also encourage employees to get on their listserv so they can get updates as well. So, so hopefully we will get everybody notified and informed and educated regarding all of this before it happens in July, and then also make sure that Oregon residents are aware that they can file for an exemption. And all of that is through the state. We cannot, the state notifies us that they are approved for the exemption. We can't just call them exempt. They have to go through the process. Any questions?
Interesting. I don't have any.
No, okay. That's all I've got as far as HR is concerned.
Forty-three more minutes.
What do you want to talk about?
I don't know.
I mean, never mind. Now is the time.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Good update. Wow, do executive for that, yeah? That'd kill some sap for an entire.
Does that $30,000 go up each year, or is that a flat rate that they're setting?
They said it could increase. They're not giving amounts, but inflation could change the amounts eventually.
Because if it's based on 20, 20 hours a week for a year.
Right.
But if you, it takes 10 years to buy into it, well, 10 years from now, that's not going to cover a year, 20 hours a week.
Right, yes. So they are saying there could be possible increases, but they're not.
But it's not designed into it.
It's Washington state legislative.
Yeah.
I, I think they're still looking into that. I, I'll check and see if they have anything in their information on their website and forward it to you if they do. They, it's not a flat no, though, I know.
Even if you work 500 hours, you did not contribute $36,000.
Well.
Technically, it's going to be a Ponzi scheme of sorts, because the first guy's going to get a lot more than they ever paid him. But there's nothing new with that. Okay. Yeah, if you guys are okay, we can go into executive for solid waste handling agreement. That'll lighten up afternoon, and we can have more just board pending stuff in the afternoon and save that half an hour.
For how long, sir?
Good question. Every time I think we know this, it ends, ended running longer. Let's do 20 minutes for the first. Just because, and then we'll keep track when there could be extensions. So for everybody out there in Zoom land, we are going to be going into executive session for follow-up discussion regarding the proposed amendment to the solid waste handling agreement. This executive session is in accordance with RCW 42.30.110 print one print D to review negotiations of the performance of publicly bid contracts when public knowledge regarding such consideration would cause a likelihood of increased costs. Any issues of a general nature will be discussed in open session. We're going to go in for 20 minutes. That may end up being extended. We are going to go off of Zoom, but when we are out of this executive session, we are just going to adjourn for lunch. We will not do any open business, so you won't be missing anything. And then we'll see you back at one o'clock.